Put in who's on the telephone.
If we can, we can get that out.
What do you mean, put them in?
Can you type in the person's name?
I don't know who they are.
Know who they are.
Uh, maybe we could say that folks whose names aren't coming up in participants can um type their name into chat.
What?
Eddie, go be quiet. So how do I? Alright, so there's Michael.
Tony Law.
I'm there.
Join, hi Tony. Do you have? Other. I'll get that.
So I have somebody from the ARC, is that Kathleen Durkin?
Yes, looks like it.
Is my audio on? Can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Nope.
Who was that?
What?
You're bad. Okay.
Mike Bullis is here.
Right.
Julie Gaynor, is Julie Gaynor here?
She said she was coming on yet. You ready, Jay Bennett, Doug?
Yeah, I think we're, I think we're okay.
Okay.
Are folks seeing the agenda?
Well, everybody.
Paulette. Hey.
Has joined the meeting.
Who's that?
Hi.
Hi Paulette.
Hi.
So is this our picnic?
Jay, Paulette is 7126.
Okay.
Alright, let's go ahead and begin. I'm going to begin. First of all, thank you everybody for coming, being with us this morning. It's not the way we would want to be meeting. We would much prefer being person. But we're going to be doing this virtually today for the first time. Thank you Jay for figuring out how to do this. This may be a way of the future for a while, so if it is, please be patient. You will be counted as present. That is why Jay is making sure he knows who everyone is that is here. Because we're required to have six meetings a year, although we're going to modify that. You will be counted as present today. Only one. Julie's saying like you can't see everyone. Okay. Only one, only one rule for virtual meeting. If you have an iPhone or you're on a computer, please mute yourself. And if you're on a flip phone, please put star six. Someone needs to do that. Okay.
Yeah, somebody's getting a phone call and we can hear your phone ringing.
Yeah, I think we're good. Everyone should, Paulette, Paulette, put star six please, sweetie. Okay?
I did.
Okay, do it again. Okay. The, um, thank you to the executive committee who has a meeting with our strategic planner. They have the strategic planning committee. So we're going to begin with that update from Ben.
Are we going to do the activity report?
Oh, pardon me, yes. Thank you. We have to approve the activity report. Hopefully everyone had a chance to read that. I sent in a few suggestions for changes. Does anyone else have a recommendation for it? Any additions, corrections, deletions? Speak now or hold your peace. If you have questions, do I have a motion to approve the activity report?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Who's second?
Kathleen.
Kathleen's second. And then every, if anyone has anything to say, just by saying. Give me a thumbs up. Thank you for that reminder, Jay. So, as I said, we've been meeting as the strategic planning committee meeting with Wendy Wolf. Ben, she updated on that. Thank you.
Alright, a lot of what has taken. A lot of what's taking place, there, there's some background music noise in there.
Someone.
A lot of what's taking place in the strategic planning is shown in the report that Jay did. Basically, we started off beginning of the year determining who we could use as a strategic planner. Went through the process with Baltimore County and engaged the services of Wendy Wolf as our strategic planner. Uh, we had a first meeting with her back in May 29th, where we discussed where we were going with the plan. We were looking for perhaps a three-year, two to three-year plan. At that meeting, it was discussed putting together a survey to the commission. Small group met after that, put together ideas with Wendy for a survey. Survey went out and I believe about 23 to 24 individuals on the commission responded to that survey, which was very good. At our next meeting that we had of the full strategic planning committee on June 17th, Wendy shared with us the results of that survey. And basically, in talking about our strategic planning, starts with our mission and vision. Fifty-two percent of responding to the survey agree that our current mission and vision is, you know, running on target. Our mission statement to foster attitudes and promote behaviors with respect and value people with disabilities among county government and citizens and others. Fifty-nine percent said the mission is good and perhaps stands as is. There were discussion points as far as what is the priorities of the commission. And in this strategic plan, we're looking at perhaps a two to three-year period for this plan. And the strategic plan, the components are basically a vision, a mission, values, strategic priorities. At our last meeting, we tried to narrow down some of our strategic priorities, measure type of objectives. And so, at our last meeting, I thought was very productive that we had. And it's uh, something that we were able to do, actually break down into about three different, three or four different separate discussion groups, have a discussion and come back and meet as a whole committee. So that I thought was, was very successful. I'd like to thank everybody who's participated in that process. Our next discussion with the strategic planner will take place at our commission meeting in July. So I think we're moving ahead on a targeted plan and a time period that I think we're all very pleased with at this point. That's it.
Thank you, Ben. Next up is a report on capital projects. So let me get that up on the screen. We have five capital projects funded with community development block grant funds supporting organizations that serve individuals with disabilities. The total dollar amount for those five projects all combined is $576,000. That's a good number. We had in prior years, lower numbers than that, so we wanted to catch up. We did some outreach, so forth and so on. As far as the official review and approval of these projects, they have been through a committee review, which included three members of the Commission on Disabilities, Jose Sanchez, Doug Smith, and Kelly Malik. So I would like to thank those three individuals for assisting us in the review of the capital projects. Associated Catholic Charities is looking to install an elevator, which is one component of a very significant project at their Villa Maria building. The Penmar organization is looking to establish a outdoor activity area with educational and therapeutic benefits. This outdoor area is adjacent to, or really part of their Maryland Line Day Facility and Headquarters facility up there in the north. Key point, Health Services is looking to renovate a large kitchen space. They actually don't cook in the kitchen. They have food brought in, so there's a lot of kitchen equipment and space that they're going to repurpose, put into offices, and that will help consolidate their activities at their Catonsville location. This is psychiatric rehabilitation activities. The League for People with Disabilities is looking to expand its parking capacity in a big day, in a big way. I've been there several times and I sympathize with that need. Staff and clients sometimes have to find on-street parking. So they've asked us to help them with the security component of their large parking lot acquisition and development. So that's the project for the League for People with Disabilities. Prologue, which does serve a significant number of clients with disabilities at their headquarters facility in, in Pikesville. They're looking to replace the main water heater and the main HVAC system. So that's a, a good project for prologue. These have been reviewed by the Capital Grant Review Committee and they've been examined by myself. I have visited all of these locations and I have put forward these recommendations to my superiors in the Department of Planning. Next step, if everything goes well, as it goes from the Department of Planning to the County Budget Office, and from the Budget Office, it goes to a County Administration Grant Review Committee, and then ultimately it goes, notified, county councils notified, and they either approve it and remain quiet, or they raise questions and bring one or two grants in as part of the official county council agenda. So I will keep you informed as that process moves along. Are there any questions about the capital projects?
Hi, I'm just wondering how many other project applications were received? Did we have a good number?
Yeah, we had a very good number. We have a total of nine applications were received. We have broadened the scope of capital projects to serve clientele that are individuals with disabilities. We expanded it because we were having, you know, a downturn in the demand for those projects. To general community development projects. We did have, um, let's see. One that's not on this list is an affordable housing project to serve, you know, housing-eligible individuals in Randalls Town. So of the nine that came in, we're recommending six forward, and of the six, you're looking at five. Two of the applications didn't meet minimum scoring, and one application is seeking adjustments to county grant language, and we can't put that forward until the grant language is sufficiently agreed upon by the two parties.
I'm happy to see that we have some agencies who are in the mental health field applying and being awarded grants, because that's not always the case.
Exactly. Thank you, Jay.
You're very welcome.
Okay, the consolidated plan.
Okay, I'm, I'm up again. Let's see what happens. Okay, so we published our consolidated plan in May. It's out there online at the Department of Planning website. So as part of the consolidated plan, we prepare information on special needs populations. Some information about individuals with disabilities. I'm going to keep this as brief as possible. In addition to that, I administered a survey to the full commission in December. Eighteen commission members participated, so I want to report back to you on key findings from the survey. So, brief facts from the consolidated plan, fresh facts regarding the population of individuals with disabilities. Baltimore County has, according to census data, 95,506 residents with a disability. That is 11.7 of the county population. The median income for county individuals with a disability is 26,692. That is 36% less than the figure for individuals with no disability. The percentage of county, the percentage of the county population with a disability that is employed is 25%. That is a bit of a low number. Represents a challenge for all of us. Population facts continued. Forty, forty, uh, this comes, this information comes from a analysis of impediments to figure housing choice. It's a giant document. So embedded in there are some facts. They did a, it was a regional analysis. So they did a regional survey, about 700 individuals in the region. They asked questions about needs for people with disabilities. So, according to this survey, including Baltimore County, 44% of the region's dwellings that have an occupant with a disability did not fully or properly accommodate the needs of the person with a disability. So 44% did not get there all the way. While many government subsidized affordable housing developments do include accessible units, a significant portion of those units are still not affordable for many people with disabilities. So, key findings from the survey. Eighteen commission members participated in the survey, the community needs survey. Eighty-three percent of the commission members surveyed say more affordable rental housing is needed in Baltimore County. All participants said that homes and apartments, we need more homes and apartments that are modified to meet the accessibility needs of individuals with disabilities. That was a unanimous of eighteen members. Eighty-three percent of the survey population say the county needs more supportive housing, which is housing that has social services-type activities attached to the housing, direct service connected to the housing. All participants say that more transportation options are needed for people with disabilities. And there were many mentions in the survey of the desire or need to improve the Maryland Mobility Service. All survey participants said that some component of the county's built environment needs improvement. Mentioned when we had an open-ended response to what do you want to see in the built environment. Sidewalks and curb cuts were frequently mentioned. Accessible bus stops were mentioned. Ramps to buildings were mentioned. And improvements to parks and park restrooms that would accommodate needs of individuals with disabilities were also mentioned in the context of that question. That's the report I have for the con plan and the survey results. Would anybody like to ask questions or discuss this further?
But a copy of this is on the website or you could send it out, Jay?
I could send this document out after the meeting. This, this language and these findings are in the con plan. I will, I will buy lunch to anybody who can find it in there. But it is there. It's, it's a tough, it's a tough document to navigate, and it's kind of put in, in different components of the document. So, this is a very boiled-down version for a visual presentation. I have, you know, more of a text document that cites the specific sources and, you know, is more thoroughly written.
If I ask you to send that out, because it is very difficult to find in the consolidated plan. Maybe we can do that today or tomorrow. Thank you.
Yes, I will send something out.
Great. Lot of good statistics in there. Thank you. Okay, this year, we are going to try to continue the celebration of an award ceremony. Obviously, it's going to be very different, and we discussed that at length. So Doug, give us an update on that.
Sure. Good morning, everyone. Nice to see everyone back together again. You know, just everything going on with COVID-19, social distancing and things of that nature. We've come to the conclusion that it may not be safe right now to have the traditional award ceremony. However, we feel that the award ceremony is of great importance, and we want to be able to continue to recognize Baltimore County citizens for all the great things that they do. So this year, we've decided that it'll be a little different, and we'll be doing it virtually, just like we are today. We'll try to incorporate some things to make it a little unique. You know, we're open to different suggestions such as giving away gift cards, things of that nature. But we're going to try to make it as fun as we possibly can in a virtual environment. The, the nomination forums are out. We have a, two categories within education, that is Student of the Year and Teacher of the Year. We have two categories in employment. We have the Employer Award and the Employee Award. Two within volunteering, that is the Volunteer Award and the Disability Advocate Award. And then one for accessibility, which would include any business or store owner that is making some, some accessibility there.
Mary Scott, you used yourself.
So there'll be a lot more information to come over the next few months. But just to let everyone know, to go ahead and start getting the nominations out there. You know, let's get some people nominated and start picking our winners, and we'll start putting out more information soon about what it's going to look like and how everyone can access it.
So people will register online, is that correct again?
That's correct, yes.
And do we have a deadline for registration at this time?
Yes.
Deadline? Did you say deadline?
Yes.
We're, it's going to be fluid, because it's not going to be as difficult as we get together to choose persons. We wanted to, first of all, make it simple, make it hybrid, make it virtual. So we only have six categories, which doesn't mean you can't nominate others. It's going to be a lot easier to choose the award winners, so it'll be later. You know, we won't, we, maybe even end of summer, but we'll, we'll send out an exact date on that in a little bit.
Okay, so we don't.
Go ahead, Julie.
I was going to say, we don't need to tell people a date at this time, then aim for mid-August or something, just if people ask, or what are we thinking?
That sounds pretty realistic, yeah, yeah. And also, Jay has said he's going to be actually contacting the Office of Communications to see how they can assist us on this, because they can probably really be of some help, you know, with, with bringing this along. A couple of our organizations have done virtual awards or virtual celebrations or virtual fundraisers. So we might, might even tap into that, into what they've done to make it successful. But we didn't want to give up on, because it's such a wonderful part of what we do, and it's a great way, again, like Doug said, to recognize people that do incredible things in the community.
So are you, we looking at possibly, and I know it's down the road, but are you looking at possibly something being livestreamed at the time? Or are you looking at pre-recorded kinds of things and highlighting of the individuals?
All of the above.
Okay.
Because we don't know exactly how to do it. You know, we will be possibly even looking for a photo opportunity with the county executive with, with another person. Again, we don't know that that can happen or will happen. It all depends on, you know, our, the health of, of the county. So we are looking to all the above, and we're open for suggestions if anyone wants to get back to us about it. Because a lot of people have been involved with us helping make this a success. But I'm real excited that we're not going to be just skipping it. I hope everyone agrees.
Yeah, I think it's great that we're having this, and I know that the ARC, ARC Baltimore is having a virtual award ceremony very soon. I'm not sure when.
Next week.
Maybe, oh yeah, I guess I better RSV.
Better register, Mayor.
Better register. So maybe we can tune into that and see what they're doing and how they're doing it, because they usually do things pretty well.
Yes, they do.
Maybe we could get somebody from the ARC to help us put this together, because I think it sounds, I think it's going to be more complicated than it sounds.
It, it is a little more complicated, for sure, but we, we have a number of awards too. And we have Jamie Costello still seen for us, virtually. But we, sure, we, you know, absolutely be willing to help.
Can I register also?
Sure.
Because I haven't seen the registration. Thank you.
It's just on the website.
Perfect, oh wonderful.
Yep, more than welcome.
It's really nice to see that a lot of these celebrations are still continuing.
Absolutely.
It gives me hope. Right.
So, do we have Kathleen lined up for this?
We do, and you know what? I didn't even think about that, but um, as we, maybe a couple of us could be meeting. Mary, if you were to meet with Doug and Ben and Jay and I about this or Julie, maybe we can set up a subcommittee meeting to further, you know, finalize our details. And I'm, you know what? I'm sure she would help be part of this again. That's a great idea. Thank you.
So also, the, the 2019 photos from last year's event are now live on the website. Jay's also posted a link for everyone down in the chat feature. So if you want to take a look for the photos from last year.
Right. Any other comments about that?
I'll just quickly say that, um, you know, these are hosted via Flickr, which is one of the picture websites, been around for many years. So I took the guts to talk with county communications, so the 2019 photos are on Flickr. That just means we put one link on the website. We don't post all the photos to the commission website. They're hosted by the secondary service. And it looks like we can do that going forward as well.
I think the county executive has done a great job. He's hired some youngsters, you know, a lot younger than me, and they're sort of redesigning the website in certain ways, updating it. And our website has been updated a little bit, which is wonderful. Along with one of the changes that it's going to take a little while to do is everyone on every board and every commission in. is everyone on every board and every commission in the county will need to reapply and be reappointed. It's not as bad as it sounds. But I think it's a good idea just to sort of clean up and make sure the right people are on the right commissions and boards. So Jay has figured out how to utilize the new application. It's called Granicus, where you'll, you'll have an application. I was sort of the guinea pig and I applied first. It wasn't easy at first. I had to go back three times to continue. But after I sent my application in with my resume, there are certain things you really need to know ahead of time to, to be successful the first time you do this. So what, so what we've been doing is taking five or six people at a time and saying, all right, we would like you to reapply. These are the things you need to know ahead of time to have with you. For instance, with references, you have to have the reference of the person, where they work, what their job title is, what their information is for contacting. Just a little, just to make it a little bit easier for when you are applying. So that'll be coming to you at one point if you haven't already received it. Again, it's called Granicus. Anything you want to add to that, Jay? I don't know if there are any questions about that at this point. Great, okay. Let's just check in with each other. Anybody have like any updates as far as what's going on? One announcement I wanted to make was, I think, a really great one from the Department of Disabilities. The governor signed an executive committee executive order on May 11th to be effective May 22nd, saying that, was signed by two cabinet-level department heads, Carol Brady, Carol Beatty, and then the Secretary of Health, stating, because this has been a concern, that if someone with a disability is hospitalized for a non-COVID-related issue, that they may have someone with them. I know that it's really been a concern for people who have been in the hospital or even been in the hospice that have been alone. So I think that they really did identify that this was a need. I'll be sending a copy of that declaration out a little bit later tonight. But I think it, I was very, very happy to hear this. And I'm having a meeting with Christian Illey, the deputy director. So any other updates, I'll let you know.
Carrie, this is Kathleen again. We did, we've used that letter a number of times, sometimes successfully, sometimes not.
Really?
And where we still did get pushback from the hospitals, Carol has, we've, you know, been in contact with Carol or Secretary Beatty. And, and they've been terrific about really advocating very directly with some hospitals that have said no.
Wonderful. Well, evidently each hospital system was to receive this executive order, correct?
Yes, and they were supposed to develop their own policies of how they were going to respond. And some were wonderful and some were not.
I'll be doing, okay. So that the ones that said no, was Carol able to negotiate that to a more positive outcome?
In the one situation, no, because the, just the timing.
Okay.
But, so, and we haven't had to use, we've tried to avoid that hospital, actually. So I'm not sure, but, but she did intervene.
Right. So was there documentation you needed the family to have or just to have that document with them?
We had, we bring the letter. Our staff bring the letter.
But I told people to make copies.
Yep, that's what we've done.
But I'm saying, was there any question about documentation of a disability?
No, no, they just refused.
Oh, jeez. Okay. It is a positive move, but I'm glad to hear that, you know, the progress or not lack of progress, so that we can work on that. And I'll mention that to Christian tomorrow also.
Yeah, and again, if, if that does happen, I would recommend communicating with them because Carol immediately had her staff intervene directly with that specific hospital. It was just too late for us, but it's still a good thing.
That's really wonderful to know. It really is. That, I mean, some good things are coming out of this, of everything that's sort of negative around us. And it really does kind of good light on things at times and offer hope.
Yeah, and Carol's been phenomenal advocate for us.
Wonderful. I'm so glad to hear that. Anyone else want to make the announcement, just check in, say, I'm leaving for Florida? Or retired or whatever?
Well, can I just add one more thing, still Kathleen? We are significantly concerned about the budget and the four percent.
Yeah.
So we're doing a lot of advocacy in the DD community around, you know, make, hoping and, and, you know, contacting the Board of Public Works because it has not been on the agenda. There's thought that it'll be on the agenda for July 1. But we are hearing across the state that that is a significant issue. If that four percent, obviously, to be able to pay our staff more than the minimum wage. And given the COVID crisis and the losses that DD providers have taken in the last, I mean, we, just our agency have lost almost $2 million in the last three, four months. So, and are paying hazard pay to all our staff, which is not being funded. So agencies are in critical condition and that four percent has to get funded. So we're advocating, obviously, with the governor and comptroller and such. But I, I would just keep an eye out and any advocacy that anyone can do, we should really contact the four, you know, that are making that decision in the next few weeks.
Okay, let me suggest, in the, in the past, I've found it most successful. If you have a sample letter, who to contact with, with email, phone numbers, and you send it to Jay or I, we can distribute it. I mean, when I, when I receive emails about contacting someone, if it has all the information, I do it immediately. If you could, Jay, I, we would distribute it to commissioners.
Sure, we've been sending out blasts. The ARC Maryland, all the ARCs have been sending out blasts to everybody and it's on our website. But, but I can ask Kate, Jay, to send you something.
That'd be fabulous. Thank you. Anyone else?
I got a positive update from the league. The Wellness Center, the Gymnasium for People with Disabilities and the local community will be opening on Monday. They say, you know, gym should be at fifty percent capacity. But the gym is never more than ten percent capacity anyway. So we're not anticipating a problem. But appropriate social distancing and we've adjusted the machinery. The pool is not open yet. It'll probably be another few weeks till we get the pool back open. But excitingly, Camp Greentop will resume August, early in August, for two family camp sessions. We're not having our traditional sessions. But we've always done a family camp, really for a weekend, for a family to go with their loved one for two or three, check in on a Friday leave on Sunday. This will be more of a four to five day, two sessions in early August. And we're just getting the information out about that. So I was pleased to see that the eighty-third summer in a row will occur at Camp Greentop, just in a more modified fashion. Thank you.
That, great to hear. It's such, it's so good to hear good news. That's wonderful. Maybe I probably need to join.
This is, this is Brian from Gallagher Services. And just to go along with David, another piece of good news is this has led agencies to really develop, I think, some pretty innovative remote supports that we're offering to people using technology. Kathleen, I saw one of the calendars that you had developed, the ARC had developed, which was really good. I think all the agencies are kind of doing that, yeah. And it's really good. I think that'll be a continuing service. Hopefully, we'll be allowed to continue that service going forward.
This is Ben. Want to let everybody know that Baltimore County's 11th District has a new delegate, a Lisa Bel Castro. She is, works for Prince George's County and Allied Sports. So I think she'd be a good advocate for our community that we represent in the future down in Annapolis. So I would encourage anybody who has any issues, funding issues and the like, to perhaps starting to talk to Lisa. I put on a couple of weeks ago, a virtual, kind of an, what's called an Alzheimer's Cafe, where I put together a whole presentation of a safari that I went on in Africa this past October. So if anybody perhaps wants to do this on a Zoom presentation to their clientele, get in touch with me and we can work something out. It's about a forty-five minute presentation. It's basically just the animals and I give a little brief description of, of the, the animals themselves.
Lisa Bel Castro has been very involved with disability-related issues. And I've been in contact with her a couple of times. So she is a good person to contact for support, again, in Prince George's County. I thought she was in District 11. I'm pretty sure she is. As well as our awards winner last year for legislation, Dr. Michelle Guyton. In fact, she is having a virtual town hall on racism and disability coming up. So I'll make sure to send that also, add that out also from Dr. Michelle Guyton. Anyone else? This is great. Okay, well, it's only, this must be a record. It's eleven forty-five, so we're doing good, I think, without having to get to twelve-thirty. If any else.
Carrie, what are you serving for lunch?
What do you want? It's on, it's on its way. I know. I do miss seeing everyone's person. It really is so heartwarming to, to have to get everybody to be quiet after ten or fifteen minutes when they're still socializing. Because it's a great place to network and to be together and, and I do miss that. But the good thing about it is I don't have to travel to go to any more of my meetings. I'm still having a ton of meetings, but enjoying seeing people and getting in contact with them.
Mike Buller.
Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. One, the Image Center will be on midday tomorrow. It's today Wednesday, yes. And it'll be midday tomorrow on Channel 2, focusing on some of our engineer projects that we do also. Yeah, Lisa Bel Castro has been extremely helpful in several areas. He's a brand-new delegate. You're right, it is, it is District 11. And if you're not on our Monday, we have a statewide broadcast. It actually started out as a, as a Baltimore City, Baltimore County, Hartford County broadcast. But the Image Center now has a weekly broadcast that goes out Monday afternoons at two o'clock. You might want to get on the list so that you can see who the guests are. We've had Carol Beatty from the Department of Disabilities. We have, we have a lot of other folks signed up. This week it was, last week it was Disability Rights Maryland. There was some other lawyer this week, can't remember who. But we've managed to figure out all the people we can sue, so we're doing good. But get on our list, send me a note if you want to get on the list. And I'll make sure that you get signed up so that you find out who the guests are every week. My, my feeling is that, that we need to take advantage of being able to get the word out about who we are and what we're doing. So that's it, I think.
That's a wonderful opportunity because all of the Centers for Independent Living in the state do participate. For a while, it looked like getting food to people with disabilities was one, was one of my sort of campaigns. And we've worked on that in different avenues, different ways. And please remember that if you are seeing someone with a disability with, that's just not getting food, to call 211. That's been set up and they're working with the Salvation Army on that. And there's been many people successfully been able to get food from that. Okay, and not anything else? I think I'm going to sign off. I thank everybody for being here. We'll let you know about if you want to work on a subcommittee for the awards luncheon. And we will let you know that we are probably going to be meeting in July. It will be Wendy Wolf's presentation of our strategic plan. Thank you all for being here. Signing off.
Elizabeth Lozaro.
Thanks, Terry. Take care. Bye.
Bye-bye.